You need, well, either way. Okay, this is the planning meeting of the 28th of October. Could we get a roll call, please?
Um, yes. Director Diana Mayer.
Here.
Director Jed Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Ranjive Kush.
Here.
Chair Larry Russell.
Here.
Not present today, Director Matt Sampson.
Okay, thank you. Uh, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Director Diana Mayer.
Aye.
Director Jed Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ranjive Kush.
Aye.
And Chair Larry Russell.
Aye.
Public comment on non-agenda matters.
Yes, Phil Sauter.
Good morning, Phil.
Morning. Uh, yesterday I watched the recording of Thursday's Finance Committee meeting and the review of water sales to date. Both water volume and revenue are down slightly from budget, although reserves were more than enough to make up for the revenue shortfall. Given the weather patterns for the first three months of the water year, it's not a surprise that water use is down slightly. Director Smith gave a balanced view that cooler, wetter months and perhaps our conservation efforts each play a role in lower water volume. Brett also continued showing sales by tier, which had a small but measurable effect on the average revenue we bring in per hundred cubic feet of water. It made me feel good about the planning committee's role in bringing attention to customer segmentation. And I finally remember the staff presentation on super users that was made before this committee on July 22nd. That discussion definitely opened some eyes on the role this segment plays in conservation, revenue, and the reliability of our water supply. The committee agreed at that time to do a couple of things. First, to do a similar breakout on our commercial institutional and irrigation customers who account for 25% of our water sales. And second, to bring the super user presentation before the full board. Although a few months have gone by and neither of those have yet occurred, I think it would be useful to the board to see the super user presentation. And I expect the commercial, industrial, and irrigation customer study will prove valuable as well. These two presentations would provide the board with information that would help optimize rate setting, tier adjustments, conservation programs, and financial performance. This would also dovetail nicely with the deep dive into recycled water that Director Sampson promised at last week's board meeting. So I'm hoping there's still a plan to get these presentations before the full board and the public. Director Smith made a similar request a few weeks ago, and I think the, the answer to achieving both our financial and demand management goals lies in understanding how best to reduce our outdoor need for potable water. I'd appreciate any help with moving these studies out of committee and sharing them with the full board and the public. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
There are no further comments.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Director Diana Mayer.
Aye.
Director Jed Smith.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ranjive Kush.
Aye.
Chair Larry Russell.
Aye. Okay. Capital Improvement Program, Castagna Pump Station Phase Two Rehabilitation Project.
Good morning, Chair Russell, board members. I'm Alex and I, Engineering Director. Here with me this morning is Zach Talbott, our Engineering Manager Design, who will be presenting the Castagna Pump Station project. And I'll let Zach get into the details.
Thank you, Alex.
That's the magic one. See, they have the touch.
Yeah, thank you. I was over here trying to work with that. Thank you.
Test sack.
I failed. All right, good, uh, good morning, directors. I'm here to present Phase Two of the Castagna Pump Station Rehabilitation Project. The project is located on Castagna Road in Petaluma, as well on Hamilton Drive in the city of Nevada. The district serves about 191,000 residents here in Central and Southern Marin County. Roughly 75% of our water comes from our local reservoirs and 25% is imported from the Sonoma Water, from Sonoma Water through the North Marin Aqueduct. The Castagna Pump Station, which was built in 1977, uh, was originally used to boost flows in the aqueduct. It was taken out of service in 2015 after upgrades to the system, which allowed the water to move via gravity. During the 20 and 2021 drought, the district required Castagna to provide operational flexibility for importing additional water. The first phase of the rehabilitation project was completed in 2021, uh, and in which we reconnected the aqueduct to the pump station and restarted it. Phase Two focuses on improving reliability, efficiency, and the pressure relief system. As the district advanced the proposed atmospheric river capture project design, staff identified a chance in April of this year to scale back the full rehabilitation project to avoid costly work that might later, later be replaced by the atmospheric river project. The revised Castagna project will install one new high-efficiency pump and motor and install a 16-inch pressure relief valve and 8,000-gallon discharge tank at the Ignacio Treatment Plant. Once completed, the pump station will be able to flow up to 24 million gallons per day, improve energy efficiency, and protect the aqueduct and treatment plant from pressure surges. Overall, this project strengthens the system reliability and supports future, uh, future water supply flexibility while aligning with our long-term planning. The engineer's estimate for this project is $2.1 million, and bids will open on November 18th. The project is scheduled to last 478 days with an anticipated completion date of April 1st, 2027. If bid documents are acceptable, the staff will make recommendation at a future regularly scheduled board meeting for contract approval. Staff recommends the planning committee review and comment on the Castagna Phase Two Rehabilitation Project. Thank you.
What is the Ignacio Treatment Plant?
Oh, what is the Ignacio? It's, um, it's where we, uh, it's a polishing, polishing plant is like what we like to call it. So we have potable water coming in along the aqueduct, and then we add additional, um, polishing chemicals to bring it up to our standards before it enters the system.
Yeah, not exactly a treatment plant.
Correct.
Okay, I'm just a little curious. Question?
Yeah, thanks, Zach. You know, you discussed this in a lot of detail. I think it was in around April, right? And you took us through the history of the pump station, bringing it back online and the decision not to go with the whole, the extensive Phase Two, original, very extensive Phase Two plan. So, um, this seems to fall in line with the discussions we had back in April. We had a lot of, we had a lot of questions about the additional, um, resiliency that the upgrade to the pump station did provide in the case of drought. I can't remember the extent, so it seems that, you know, it had just been decommissioned. We were receiving water through gravity flow. Restarting the pump station there allows us to bring water down more quickly and potentially achieve larger volumes within shorter periods if we are facing, uh, reservoir shortfalls. So, so that, that, that I remember and it, it, the, the full, full Phase Two upgrade that was originally conceived is, may not be as necessary if we're, if we're moving water to our reservoirs now through the ARC project in the future and able to rely on those balance, you know, water that's being stored in our reservoirs with direct imports from Sonoma. Am I, am I getting all this roughly right?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, so I, I think, um, you know, thanks again for, you know, bringing this to us and preparing the, um, the bid process, you know, hope, hope we're successful in, in getting a viable bid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Uh, one thing I would request, we should get some serious thought to painting it. Um, I love the architecture. Like I said, they did a dream on that, how they lowered the profile. But the colors are a little dated, to say the least, so.
Larry, can you, but what, what colors are for potter?
Well, it's yellow and brown.
Yeah.
That's a definite 60s look. Something more like the treatment tanks, not green necessarily, but more that fits in.
That blends in with the surrounding.
Blends in instead of stands out, yes.
That's a, that's a very minor change.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Easy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, you know, if it's too expensive, it's too expensive, but, uh, that would help, I think. It has a little bit of a look of garage doors to me, but, you know.
I'm all for it. I just didn't know that Director Russell was also had that design flair.
Well, it's more of what catches my eye when I'm driving down the road there, you know, and I like it less catch my eye.
Yeah.
It, it does a pretty good job of not catching my eye, but it could do a better job. So, okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, any public comment?
There are none.
Okay. Okay, and are you doing the next one, too?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is a public hearing, which we're going to open here about water quality.
Yeah, Chair Russell, so.
Let me open to hear.
Oh, we'll start with the staff presentation.
Then open here.
After that, open the public hearing for any comment and then close it for board discussion.
Cool.
So Matthew's getting ready. Um, this is, uh, you, you met Matthew at the last board meeting and probably have seen him before that. Um, but Matthew is our new water quality manager. So congratulations to Matthew and his new promotion. And he will be taking us through the Public Health Goal Triennial Report, which is every three years that we're required to, to provide this. And I'll let Matthew take it away.
Good morning. This one's on, right?
Yep.
Just making sure. Thank you.
Good morning.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Thank you, Paul. Matthew Steiner, Water Quality Manager, and today we're going to be talking about the Public Health Goal Report. So kind of jumping right off, what is the Public Health Goal Report? The purpose of the report is to provide customers, consumers with information on the potential, um, health risks associated with contaminants even below the maximum contaminant level. Uh, in, in accordance with the California Health and Safety Code, uh, we are a public water system that serves more than 10,000 customers, so we are required to publish this report, as Paul suggested, every three years. The, the report is very specific to those contaminants that are below the maximum contaminant level, the MCL, but above the public health goal, and we'll, we'll define those terms a little bit later. Uh, this report is specific only to California, and it's prepared every three years. And, uh, there is a requirement for a public hearing as part of it. It's probably worth mentioning at this point that, uh, Marin water, our drinking water quality meets all federal and state drinking water regulations. This is separate from that. So going into some useful terms, the maximum contaminant level, or the MCL, is the highest level of a contaminant that's allowed in drinking water by regulation. It's the regulatory definition of what is safe. Uh, MCLs are set, uh, by the United States Environmental Protection Agency and as well as the California State Water Boards. Public Health Goals, PHGs, are similar to maximum contaminant level goals in that they are the level of a contaminant in drinking water that does not pose a health risk. PHGs are set by the California Office of Environmental Health and Hazard Assessment, whereas MCLs, MCLGs are set by federally by the US EPA. Public Health Goals and Maximum Contaminant Level Goals are not the regulatory limits. There were two constituents that required us.
Sorry, Matt, that's, it's a really interesting distinction between the highest level of a contaminant that is allowed versus the level of a contaminant that does not pose a public health risk. Could you just explain the, you know, the distinction between those two criteria?
Yes, so the, the maximum contaminant level is, um, set by the UPA, the US EPA and the California State Water Boards as any amount higher than this can cause public, uh, can cause distress or health concerns of a particular, particular subsect, like perhaps it's a carcinogen or a gastrointestinal distress. And in order to set those levels, there's a lot of research that goes into it, researching, um, either, you know, on, uh, various, how do I phrase this?
Yeah, I mean, basically the MCL factors in, um, sort of a lowest observed health effect and then adds a margin of safety, and that's the analysis that's done, um, in terms of the effects on health. But it's also required to factor in whether there's treatment and, um, the, the viability of that treatment in order to reduce, uh, that constituent to a lower level. So they, they're, they're, they're a classic balance of risk, classically between, in drinking water, it's disinfection and disinfection byproducts. Obviously, without disinfection, there's a tremendous risk to consuming water, as you have seen in the early, late 1800s, early 1930s, before chlorine was introduced into the water supply for disinfection. Uh, typhoid and other waterborne diseases were prevalent, and you could see the change in those numbers across the United States, even as chlorine starts to be adopted through 1933 across, across America. So that's the MCL. It's this, it's this balance of regulatory limit with health effects and practicality of treatment and cost of that treatment. The Public Health Goal is the level of a contaminant in drinking water that poses no significant health risk. And, uh, that's for a lifetime of consumption of that water. And there is no thought given to the viability of treatment or the, even whether treatment exists. Or as you'll see in this case, uh, we're talking about in the next constituent today, we can't even measure to the level that the PHG is set at. So hopefully that helps.
Would it be fair to say that the Public Health Goal is what would be optimal in a perfect world, aspirational? And the maximum contaminant level is what is achievable, what is determined to be achievable?
That's a good way to think of it.
They, you kind of skipped over the risk side of it, though. Um, it's a little more complicated than that. That's the gist of it, but like for trihalomethanes, it's, it isn't that it causes an effect, it's that it creates one excess cancer per million people. So it's, it's not like you drink it and something's going to happen to you, at least for trihalomethanes.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, that's factored into the MCL. So there is a risk level that remains even at the MCL.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, although the risk is fairly low.
Very low. It would be for some of these, I think, it's like walking in the sun. I mean.
Probably, yes.
Same level of risk.
Yes, and I think most of the goals are zero.
A lot of the, if they're carcinogenic in any way, they're typically set at zero. Uh, the way I think about it and help myself think about these things is the public health, if there was a public health goal for driving, they would say, don't drive. Sure. That would be the public health goal for driving. So it's a similar sort of thing that they're trying to do. It's really an awareness so that we can be aware of what's in the water and if there are viable methods for us to address these things, that we, we don't ignore it and just keep doing what we've always done, so. Okay, thanks.
So there, there's two constituents, um, that worth, uh, that are included in the report. The first one is E. coli. E. coli is used as an indicator species, uh, for fecal coliform, a potentially harmful disease-causing bacteria. Uh, common sources, you know, E. coli is, uh, generally lives in the intestines of mammals, even healthy individuals. Um, common sources include agricultural runoff, sewage, and wildlife contamination. Between, so this, this reporting period between the beginning of 2022 through 2024, uh, one sample in the 5,478 samples collected tested positive for E. coli. In situations like this, we're required to have a follow-up sample to confirm the results, and in that instance, the, uh, the result did not confirm the presence of E. coli. So, um, you can imagine in, um, you know, nearly 5,500 tests, one of them could get botched for various reasons. It isn't necessarily, uh, an indication that something's wrong with the system. For, for E. coli, according to the, uh, the Drinking Water Code, there are ways to minimize that, including they're described as best available technologies, which we have already implemented. Um, and that's through filtration and disinfection at our treatment plants, maintaining positive pressure throughout our distribution system, uh, and then regular monitoring of disinfectant residual and, and other samples. The other is hexavalent chromium. Hexavalent chromium is a metal found, uh, both naturally in the environment and, um, as a byproduct of human activities. But, you know, those byproducts being things like hex, uh, like chrome plating facilities and hazardous waste sites, which we don't have any of those in our watershed. So, um, most likely sources are from natural areas like high serpentine geological formations. Monitoring for hexchrome began around 2024 when the EPA set an MCL for it, when, it's when we started monitoring for it. Samples were collected from each treatment facility, uh, both raw and treated. The range of, of measurements, which you can see on the screen there, are, are quite low. Given the MCL, which is 10 parts per billion, compared to the results that we monitored, anywhere from, you know, 0.13 to 0.5 a half a part per billion. We, we're not planning any changes to the treatment process. It's for, for perspective, you know, what, what does a part per billion look like? It's kind of hard to imagine. There's a few analogies out there. One, one that I favor is the half a teaspoon of, of, you know, of salt in an Olympic-sized swimming pool. That's one of them. Or one, another one that I heard today was, uh, if you jump one foot, you are one billionth of the weight of the moon.
I have a different one that I like. A part per million is a shot glass of vermouth in a railcar of vodka. And a part per billion is a shot glass of vermouth in 1,000 railcars of vodka.
It's a long train.
Yeah.
So just to, uh, summarize, Matt, on, on the hexavalent chromium, we are well below the MCL, the required health standard, but there are detectables, detectable levels in our, in our water supply.
Correct.
Or at least something that mimics it or interferes with it.
Perhaps.
Yeah.
And this is common throughout California. I was just looking at LA DWP, hexchrome shows up there, East Bay mud. It's on everyone's, uh, recent Public Health Goals Report. And the reason for that is the, you see the note up there, the MCL was established in October of 2024. And so that's why these are starting to kind of make an appearance. And everybody who has surface water is right in that same range around 0.2, give or take. It's just the geology, um, and naturally dissolving chrome in, in the water. And typically California waters are not that alkaline, so you don't get high chromium six values. It tends to, you know, be typically reducing conditions and limited alkalinity in natural water, so it favors a chrome four, which is, uh, not, uh, not the, the species of concern for this report, so. Um, really a pretty common result for.
These before or after chlorination?
Uh, these are raw water.
This is, this is raw, but the treated don't look much different.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So in, in summary, Marin water's drinking water quality meets all federal and state drinking water standards. Uh, we will continue to monitor constituents within the system and will continue to provide updates to the public through our annual water quality reports.
It's funny, I was in a deposition, um, regarding Vacaville. And I made a statement, they, they actually brought this up to me, that the water district that I'm sitting on the board of had a hit on hexavalent chrome. The, the, the subject about, um, Vacaville was to do with hexavalent chrome in the groundwater, and I thought that was pretty funny because, you know, I didn't remember the conversation that was probably like this, but it was probably, maybe it was like the three years before that or something when it had occurred, or maybe it hadn't occurred at all.
Yeah, three years ago, I don't know if we had.
No, no, it's more than that. It's, it's at least, at least six years ago. But maybe it had to do with the MCL.
There, there's been some changing and, you know, wavering on state standards regarding this MCL for, for a little while now. So it's, it's, as you can see, it was just finalized in '24, so that's why they're starting to show up now.
Yeah, the US military has a lot to say about this kind of stuff because they've got it everywhere. Um, we just defended Department of Defense at, uh, McClellan Air Force Base. They had a problem with chrome in the local drinking water. And, um, it, it's a lot of chrome, especially in California, in the foothill areas. You get a lot of rocks from chromite in the volcanic, volcanic.
Yeah, it tends to be higher in groundwater, so.
Yes, yes. Okay, any other comment?
Um, just, you know, great, great to see that we have only two items that even are necessary to flag, although they are not concerns with respect to, um, regulatory limits, and, and I would say even the public health goals are, you know, we're not, we're not so far above those. But, you know, Matt, I, I, I often get another question, which is related to Sulehuli and the, you know, the fact, there, apparently there used to be mercury mines there at, at some point.
Well, they're still there.
They're still under the water by here and.
The tailings are.
Now, my, my understanding is that, you know, water from Sulehuli does not exceed the MCL for mercury. That's been evaluated a few different times. Just wanted to confirm that. I think it's, you know, it's a question that keeps coming up. And do we have any comparison to the Public Health Goal for mercury?
So in terms of drinking water standards for mercury, we're essentially non-detect in the drinking water, uh, system. Uh, where, uh, Sulehuli is concerned, it's really environmental impacts related to mercury, which is a result of bioaccumulation.
In the fish.
In the fish, in the fish tissue in particular. Um, so that's been the focus of, we've done studies out at Sulehuli in collaboration with the regional board since 2009 or so, and we've been partnering, um, in other areas and, uh, with East Bay Mud and, and the state board at San Pablo to look into, to mercury issues, but they're primarily an environmental concern, not drinking water.
And it's my understanding the mines are above the water surface. It's just the tailings. What they kicked out, the, they dropped it down the slope and the tailings are submerged.
Yeah, and in cases when we are using Sulehuli for drinking water supply, that water is going into Nacasio. It's being diluted there and, and then going to the San Geronimo Treatment Plant, so.
That's correct, although it doesn't need to be diluted.
It doesn't need to be. Got it.
Yeah, it's a tricky one, mercury. And then methylmercury is really the concern, not the mercury itself. So then it takes anaerobic conditions.
To produce that.
Produce that from the mercury, yeah. Cause, you know, you can imagine, I mean, when I started in the business, we used to stabilize, um, COD samples with two milligrams of mercury, mercury nitrate was in each bottle. And basically with two milligrams of mercury nitrate in the bottle, the sample could sit for a month and show no change in COD. So it wipes out everything, the biological at that level. That's a lot. But, uh, that has since been stopped.
So now I think we would open the public hearing.
Just a quick question. Can you talk a little bit about your process for testing, your staffing, how you feel about how staff, how well-staffed you are and, 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 and how you go about making sure that we, uh, that we, um, meet the needs of our, of our system? Yeah, a bit of a loaded question, sure. Uh, so we, you know, there is four, uh, staff as part of our, our water quality technicians that are responsible for collecting samples throughout the system. Uh, and then, but there are currently two, two laboratory staff members. As far as the sampling is concerned, which I think maybe the question was geared towards, they, they work hard. They're, you know, constantly out driving around, uh, picking up samples and, um, never a dull moment on that team. You know, I'm, I, I'm now rounding the corner on my second month, turning towards the third, so I'd say that my, um, perspective is still quite brief. But, you know, there's, there's, there's always opportunity to, uh, for improvements, and I'm still trying to wrap my head around what those improvements look like. But it's, it seems like, um, you know, as far as sample collection is concerned, there, that seemed, uh, staff seems adequate currently. And, um, you know, granted, that's just one of the many things that that staff does, so, um, they've, they've got some other concerns as well, but, uh, yeah.
The recent changes that we made with the water quality lab also augment that staff with the backflow staff. So there's four technicians in the lab, and now there's three technicians available in backflow to augment that. So we're almost able to, you know, when we need to focus on the system, we can double our resources to do that. And that was really the intention of the, the changes to the laboratory structure, so. So far, it's early days. We, we started that in May, um, and it's been going pretty well so far. We've seen some good results in a couple of the months where we were able to go out through. We've seen some good results in a couple of the months where we were able to go out through the whole entire distribution system and collect information on sort of known straggler tanks and then apply our resources to dealing those, dealing with those very quickly. So, um, we'll, we'll, we'll come back to you if there's any, uh, particular struggles that we're facing. I'm sure we'll be bringing that to your attention.
Thank you.
So far, so good.
Can I ask a question? Um, one of the issues that I get approached about a lot is fluoride. And I know that's a little bit different because we add it to the water, but when people ask you about that and, um, there are, when people feel strongly about it, they seem to feel really strongly about it or convinced it's poisoning them. I just wonder what you, what your perspective is on that, what you say to people.
Generally, I say that it's a requirement of the public, uh, of the California Code of, uh, Water Code for us to add fluoride. But that's my response typically.
Mm-hmm, but what about, I, like, I don't know if it was the EPA, I know there was, and I looked at the studies, I wasn't, there was a big to-do about a year, a year and a half ago, I don't know, was the EPA, there was a, do you know what I'm talking about, Paul?
Yeah, there was, there was a fairly recent.
It's a law, law case.
The law was made of, but it was a very specific ruling to relook at the fluoride requirements. There wasn't any, um, you know, judgment, for lack of a better term, by the judge in terms of whether it was.
They were safe.
Yeah, it was just go take another look at this, please. And we're still waiting for a response from the US EPA, as far as I know, on that request from the judge. And, and in general, Matthew's right, our response has been typically over the years that it's a California law. And in fact, this water district had two ballot measures, one in 1973 and I think the other in 77 or 78, was it? Yeah, um, that confirmed, uh, that.
The people wanted it.
Wanted fluoride. And so we've been doing it ever since then, um, and.
Interesting.
That, that's likely to continue until there's a change either direction from the board or the regulation.
Would, would the board, uh, given that it's still currently a state-level requirement, if, if the district has a, a funding source available that is not rate-based, given that it's still a state requirement, I mean, do we have much ability to, to change our practices?
I, I'm not an attorney, but I wouldn't recommend it.
It seems like it would be difficult for us to.
Yeah, I think.
To, to try to, to try to oppose a state regulation.
Yeah, I, I think that's accurate, and also the fact that the voters of the district service area have approved the fluoridation of the water supply, I do think it would be challenging for the district to say, we're not gonna do that. And then, of course, the state law, I believe it applies to water providers with more than 10,000 service connections. Uh, they're required to fluoridate their water supply. Um, as Director Kush stated, if there is a funding source available for that, that's not in rate revenue, which the district does have. So therefore, I think we are kind of bound by those requirements.
I suspect that what people are wanting to see is more of an active role in sort of lobbying. You know, that this is something that should end, that we don't need this in Marin, um, so on and so forth. I, I'm not sure, but I, I just, yeah.
There was a, a vigorous discussion that Chair Russell will remember with the board and the public over about 14 months, I think in 2013 timeframe. And so there's probably a lot of information in the board packets from that year. I don't remember.
About fluoride?
Yeah, yeah, in depth, and we, we brought in external folks to, you know, discuss, um, efficacy and usefulness and.
I can't remember his last name right now, but his first name is Howard.
Pollock.
Pollock, yeah. He's a dentist professor at, uh, UC in San Francisco. And he came in, he's the appointed person in charge of fluoride science for the California Dental Association. And he came in and I, I remember we had a number of dentists that testified. And, um, the most interesting one that I can recall was one who practiced in Novato and practiced in Marin, in the, in our end of Marin. And he said that he had less dental caries in the children in South Marin than he did in Novato. But the teeth were crooketer. That, that stuck in my head, that one. Uh, he said, he didn't know if there's a correlation or not between fluoride and crooked, more crooked teeth. But, um, that was only a thing he observed was that there were substantially less dental caries in South Marin than there were in Novato.
So we'll leave it up to the state.
Yes, it's a law. It, it's not, I mean, it's in the Water Code, but it's, it's actually a law that says you shall do this. I have never been able to figure out exactly why North Marin doesn't do it, cause they're over 10,000 and.
I, I've heard it's related to the, uh, revenue, um, available revenue. You know, that they don't have a, a non-rate revenue source that could support it. But I, I don't know if that's correct.
No, I think you're accurate. I, I don't know that I believe that. But that's the position they take.
And people feel very strongly about this issue, no doubt, so I understand your question to Director Marin. Should we open the public hearing?
In a minute.
Yeah.
The, uh, in discussions with North Marin that, uh, Diana and I have been in, it was quite interesting. We're talking about connecting a real, um, interlink between us and them. And one of the issues was the returning the water to them is fluoridated. And they were quite concerned about that, which I found quite interesting. Cause that seems like a very minor issue to me. You know, this is something you use in an emergency. And, you know, so they were concerned about how to get it out. So I have a feeling that their issues are not economical, but more emotional. And they have a layboard, so they have one engineer on their board. And, um, I don't know that they really have experience or expertise to make those kind of decisions. But in any case, now we can open the public hearing. Okay. The public hearing is now open. Do we have anyone?
Yes, Phil Sauter.
I don't know if this is a hearing, but it's, it's a comment. And thank you for the presentation and for over a century of focus on water quality. Uh, it's one of the things I feel so proud to be a Marin resident when I look at the quality of our water. Um, I know we dig into numbers and we look at the bad stuff, but it might be good just to take a minute to focus on how lucky we really are to have this water that we have in Marin County. It takes a lot of hard work, I know. Last year, the, the news seemed to be full of problems. People had to boil their water, people had, you know, wells that they couldn't use, brown water, just terrible stuff. And the amount of, uh, hard work that we've put into creating this quality, along with our luck, I think, of being in a pristine watershed and just having the, 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 the local control for, for 75% of our water, we really have an amazing watershed and an amazing organization to keep that water clear and pure to the customers. I think there's an opportunity to communicate that to the public. I, I know we have a really excellent, uh, communication group. And, um, I know we let people know that we're not doing the bad stuff. But I think that if we were Procter and Gamble, we'd be getting a message out there that says, look at how well we're doing and how lucky we are to have this water supply. I think that would be helpful as we get into talks about reasonable rate increases, you really getting what you pay for. And I think it would support, uh, also conservation efforts because when you really think of using this high-quality water, half of, half of this high-quality water goes on landscaping. And I think it might focus people on what a precious resource that they're using in that regard. So, um, I just wanted to put that out there. I know we focus on, on problems and contaminants and controlling those, but I think there's a real message to take a lap on how well we're doing in quality.
Thank you, Phil. We do have certain constraints in the public, uh, announcements. Uh, there are items that need to be covered, and I don't know how much editorialization we can do of that. There are EPA standards for the, the actual physical report. But they are handled differently across the United States. Okay, any online?
There are no further speakers.
Okay, then I'm gonna close it. And, um, okay, thank you very much. Okay. The next, uh, meeting is November 13th. And I will close the meeting. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Excellent.